Checking in with Quincy School Committee Vice Chair Anthony N. Dronico for an update on the latest school committee meeting, of which Anthony was jam packed full of excitement. How are you?
Good, how are you? Great to be back. Yeah, we had a pretty long meeting last night with some pretty important topics, you know, going over the finalists for our superintendent vacancy, talked about the three reopening plans that we have to submit to the state and what those looked like, you know, updating a technology policy and placing a few items into our newly formed subcommittee.
Just to recap for folks, let's start with the superintendent search. There's been a subcommittee, right, that's been working on this?
Yeah, so the the search committee has been made up of actually 13 members from within the community and, you know, they had put a lot of work and effort getting us down from 20 applications and then subsequently interviewed eight semifinalists and then they put forth four names total. It was one internal candidate and three external candidates. Unfortunately, one of those external candidates did remove themselves from consideration prior to the public announcement, so their their name won't be released, but they did fulfill, the search committee did fulfill their their role in providing us with some finalists. And I did just want to give a shout out to to those 13 members real quick. We had my colleague and chair of the search committee Frank Santoro, Emily Lebo, Paul Brigoli, Mara Papil, Larry Tagliari, Jayden Halasy, Philip Chong, Michael Ellis, Peg McDonough, Nicole Prevost, Scott Alessandro, Cassandra Beck, and Laura Riffrio. And they did an absolutely tremendous job working with MASC, Mass Association of School Committees, to, you know, provide a rubric and a grading system to identify those that should move on and conducting those interviews is hours and hours of work, but we're pretty excited now to have those three finalists that we'll interview. And I think I'll just mention their names now. We have Dr. Omar Easy of Lynnfield, who's currently the Executive Vice Principal of Business Engagement and Innovation within Everett Public Schools. We have Dr. Jamal Mosley of Nashville, New Hampshire, who's currently the Superintendent of Nashville Public Schools. And we have Mr. Kevin Malvi, the current interim superintendent here in Quincy. So we have three incredibly qualified candidates to interview, and I'm really excited to get to know them a little bit more, talk about their qualifications, what their goals would be, and how they handle becoming the superintendent of QPS.
And although the the selection process was not open to the public, the public was involved in at least offering their input, right?
Yeah, they absolutely were. So from the very beginning, we have made this as open and a communicative process as possible with the public, and that's something that I appreciate my colleagues' faith in. So we started at the beginning with essentially establishing a survey to ask the public what they saw as the necessary characteristics and qualities that they'd like to see in the next superintendent of QPS. And we also asked them about the strengths and weaknesses they saw within our system so that whoever we ultimately select will have sort of a basis to start with and get going and say, here's where, you know, Quincy's in a good spot, here's where, you know, we can work on a few things. So that was an independent survey that was carried out by the Mass Association of School Committees. Our school committee put together the questions and the selection options. We had nearly 1,000 responses to that online survey from parents, students, administrators, teachers, other general staff, general members of the public, and it was fantastic to see. And after getting that feedback, we actually adjusted some of the selection criteria we have for the superintendent search to place a larger focus on things like special education, a commitment to vocational education, and diversity as well, diversity and inclusion and structures like that. So that's sort of the feedback that we got. And I should mention, we also conducted focus groups with these different stakeholders to really drill down into things that you might not be able to express during a simple online survey. So from the very beginning, you know, we've done our best to involve the public. And, you know, on that note, the the public will be able to watch our interviews of these finalist candidates so that, you know, we as school committee members are also held accountable to to any decision that we make, and everyone is fully aware of the process that went into it. So members or candidates will be given the opportunity for a five-minute opening statement and a five-minute closing statement. And every school committee member will be given 10 minutes to question the candidate and have a conversation with them. And that will leave 10 minutes extra, 10 minutes extra of spillover time or additional questions to recap our 90-minute interview. So all interviews will be 90 minutes. We're holding hard and fast to that rule so that everyone is on the same playing field. And the dates for those interviews, I have it here in front of me. Dr. Omar Easy will be on Tuesday, August 4th. Mrs. Kevin Malvi will be on Tuesday, August 11th. And Dr. Jamal Mosley will be on Thursday, August 13th. And the school committee is projecting that we'll be able to select our next superintendent the next day on Friday, August 14th. So that's that's the process that we've laid out. That's where we're headed. And of course, if anyone has questions about it outside of just you, Joe, you know, they can always email myself or anyone on the committee for further clarification on anything.
And, you know, and we haven't talked about the fact that all of this has been done virtually because we're in the middle of a pandemic, so that was just a little added extra complication.
Sure, you know, it definitely is, and I think, you know, the timeline has certainly been aggressive, but ultimately, I think it's produced candidates that we're really excited about. I mean, there are three absolutely incredible candidates. They have very different experiences and backgrounds, and I think they all offer something a little bit different. And we're going to have to dig into that a little bit more, and everyone will be able to see how we do that.
These these interviews coming up, Anthony, will this be the first time that the full school committee will be meeting the candidates?
It will be the first time that that all the school committee has met them. That's why the interviews are going to be 90 minutes. After talking with Glenn Kuchar, the exec director of MASC, you know, he said, you know, interviews could be 60 minutes, 75 minutes, or 90 minutes, and that's really as as long as you should go, because after that point, the quality of your interview can can go down a little bit. So we selected the longest option mainly because, you know, this is the first time we're meeting them. And in addition, the current situation doesn't really allow us to conduct final site interviews and walk in their school system or have them come visit our school system. It's just not, we're not in a position to be able to do that. So three of our members have already met all of those candidates and, you know, have had the chance to build a rapport with them, so I think that's good. But now the rest of the school committee has to do that.
Sure. And after the finalist is selected, is that when you go into contract negotiations?
Yes. So after that, you know, we would schedule executive sessions to enter into the negotiations to see if we can reach a deal with that candidate, you know, and I think that I have faith in us and in any candidate that we select that will be able to get a deal done that works for both of us.
Okay, so is this an advanced timeline? I think originally it was the 19th you were shooting for, wasn't it?
So the very, very original date was to shoot for August 12th to take a vote. And then at last, at our last meeting, we needed to adjust to make it the 21st pending schedules. And then in between the last meeting, when we decided on that, in this meeting, we conducted another poll of our finalists and our members to see what dates work. And I should also mention, in between all of this, there's a school committee meeting now on Wednesday, August 5th instead of August 10th. And that also played a part in the scheduling of interviews and the scheduling of sort of this home stretch of August here where we have a lot, a lot going on.
Okay, so yeah, there's been a lot of hours, I know, put into this, leading up to this point.
It has, but I think we know that it'll be worth it in the end, so we're happy about that.
Sure. Can we talk a little bit about proposed change that you made for for updating technology, if you will, in the school system?
Right, yeah, so we had talked about that a little bit. It's been in our policy subcommittee for a while. We know that we've had changes that are going to need to be adjusted, but as, you know, we look at the fall and really what transpired over the last few months, it's pretty clear that our technology use policy needs an overhaul. You know, it hasn't been updated since I was a student, at the very least. So it's it, some of the technologies that are mentioned within the policy don't really make too much sense anymore. Things like floppy disks aren't really used. There's not really any mention of the cloud and cloud usage. So there are a few things that need to be updated. So I reviewed the the current policy and what the best practices were on the MASC website for these types of policies. So I've proposed an overhaul that would update us to the year 2020. And that also includes within the policy updated user agreements for employees, for students in grades K through 8, for students in high school, and then a fourth one specific to the one-to-one Chromebook initiative. So you would essentially sign the Chrome, sign out the Chromebooks saying, you know, I agree that, you know, this is my responsibility as someone that's being loaned this device. I take responsibility for it. If anything happens to it, I am responsible for it, and that QPS will serve us all of the tech needs for for those Chromebooks. So that's that's the overhaul. We did vote out the policy from the policy subcommittee into up to the regular school committee level so that members are able to provide any amendments that they see fit. And the goal, I think, is that next meeting to be able to work through those amendments and propose a policy. And I do believe in particular for the employee use one, we will need to discuss that with our union just to make sure there's language that is standard and makes sense. So in addition to reviewing the MASC best practices, I also looked at what Waymouth Public Schools have for their user agreements and their Chromebook, because in the last two to three years, they've had to overhaul their agreements, and they've rolled out a one-to-one Chromebook initiative too. So I had looked over what they had done as well. So we're taking best practices not only from the state but from neighboring districts when talking about the tech policy.
Okay, you think that'll be voted on before the start of the school year?
Yeah, that's our goal, mainly because it would need to be in the Students Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, which we give out before the beginning of the school year. And there's really only so long you can wait until you print those. So we have that, and it was also mentioned by one of my colleagues, Emily Lebo, that we should also implement a remote learning policy about what is expected of students. You know, there were issues with students maybe not using their video screen to see if they were actually in the picture and engaged. But I understand there were challenges, obviously. You know, maybe the student didn't have access to the technology in the beginning stages before we rolled out the one-to-one initiative. And speaking of, those Chromebooks are expected by September so that students in grades 5 through 12 will have the opportunity for a one-to-one Chromebook. And we also invested over $1 million for our teachers to have the technology, the hardware and the software that they need in order to administer remote learning programs. So we're mindful of just the policies that we're going to need heading into the next year.
Sure. Speaking of heading into the next year, what is that going to look like in Quincy, Anthony?
Yeah, well, you know, I think there's there's still definitely some things that we need to figure out, but at the very least, last night, we reviewed per state mandate. We reviewed the three plans that our administration put together for full in-person return, hybrid model, and remote learning, strictly remote learning. So we are, we were required by the state to submit three plans, whether we liked them or didn't like them, really, any one way or another, by the end of July. So we voted to approve those plans. And then at our next meeting, it looks like we'll be selecting one of those three plans to head into the fall. Those plans do need to be selected by per state guidelines by August 10th. So that is the requirement, but I do have just a brief overview in front of me about the different models and what those look like. So I don't want to get anything wrong, so I'm just going to read from from this sheet to make sure I get it correct.
Yeah, absolutely.
We had our in-person model. Schools would follow three-foot physical distancing requirements, eating and mask breaks, and six-foot physical distancing when possible. Elementary students would remain self-contained throughout the day. Middle school students would remain in cohorts, and teachers would travel to different classrooms. High school students would remain in cohorts if possible. Classrooms would be clustered in the same area of the building, and students may need to travel outside of their cluster for electives. Lunch would be held in the classroom at all levels. So that is our in-person model. And then I'm going to go into our remote learning model. The district's remote instruction would be live synchronous instruction with asynchronous assignments. So when you have, you know, basically a mix of live, one-on-one, you know, with your class and your teacher, like you would in a normal school day, and then outside assignments. So here's the assignment, complete that on your own time. The day would be modeled after a traditional school day. At all grade levels, social emotional support and check-ins will be built into the schedule. Special education services, ELL, reading intervention and math intervention services will also be provided via live instruction through the remote model. And at all grade levels, we will have breaks for lunch, snack, bathroom, and stretch breaks will also be incorporated as well. And then we have our hybrid model. So the district's hybrid model will include students returning on a fixed and consistent schedule, either through in-person or remote environment. In order to allow our hybrid model to function effectively, teaching would occur in two cohorts. Each cohort would meet two consecutive days a week. So Cohort A, Monday and Tuesday. Cohort B, Thursday and Friday. And Wednesdays would be full remote learning for each cohort to ensure that we will be able to clean our buildings in between, in between those sessions. So remote learning days would be on Google or Zoom meets, post of assignments available on Google Classrooms. Pre-K and K students would attend four half-day in-person sessions with the exceptions of Wednesdays for cleaning. And on in-person days, elementary students would remain in self-contained groups throughout the day. Middle and high school would remain in their cohorts, similar to the in-person model that I had discussed. So those were the three plans in a very general high-view sense. And in the development of those plans, we had put out a survey to our families to get an understanding of what what they'd like to see. It was 3,500 families representing 4,500 students, which is almost half of the district, which is incredible. And essentially, what that said was, there's an even split, 33% want remote, 33% want full in-person, and 33% wants a hybrid model. So that's what we heard from families, and what we heard from teachers was essentially the same thing. It was roughly, I think, I think the numbers were a little bit different from my memory. I want to say 40% said full remote, 25% said in-person, and the remainder said hybrid.
So not only is the country politically split, it's just split in every direction.
Right. So at the very least, I do want people to know that in the development of these preliminary plans, you know, we, not only did we ask through a survey, we conducted over 30 focus groups with these groups to provide the feedback, and I, all school committee members did get a full-on transcript of the questions and the answers, the comments that were made in those sessions, not attributed to anyone, but just the text. And, you know, there are a lot of questions that that people have about how we're going to move forward and and what these plans are like. And I'm just looking over some of the frequently asked questions that we had. Give you a moment to to find where in my packet we had those FAQs. But, you know, questions that people reasonably have are, what do you do when a student or staff member tests positive? You know, what's the plan for those that are considered high risk? How are you going to make kids at the lower level wear their mask all the time? What will transportation look like? What are the cleaning procedures? What's the plan for after-school activities? What are we doing for lunch and breakfast activity? You know, what will the school calendar look like?
Mm-hmm.
There are a lot of questions that are still out there, but as far as the calendar piece is concerned, it would require a vote by the school committee to shift half-days to Wednesdays, that remote learning day, if we did a hybrid or remote day. Rather, if we just did a hybrid day, we'd have to move half-day Tuesdays to half-day Wednesdays so that in-person instruction is even for the two cohorts. And I think it's also important to note that regardless of the plan that we choose, whether it be full in-person, hybrid, or remote, those that are not comfortable, let's say, attending in person for whatever reason, are not going to be forced to. So let's say a student, you know, their family members are considered high risk, that student doesn't need to attend in person, and same for for staff. So no one is going to be forced into making a decision like that, and and will move on from from there, really.
So, I mean, really, you're going to have to have all three plans implemented, you know, regardless. I mean, if you pick one and start to go with it, the other two have to be options, right?
Right. So the way that that these plans need to be constructed, anyone needs to be, from one version, we'll say, we'll call them steps, step one, two, and three, you need to be able to easily, you know, move up a step or move down a step. So that's how these plans have have been aligned. Personally, I'm leaning at this moment towards a hybrid approach. I think knowing that there are a lot of families who want in-person instruction to some degree, is roughly 66% of those parents that were surveyed wants a minimum of a few days of in-person instruction, while knowing at the same time that, you know, a student isn't going to be forced to actually attending in person. If they want to participate just remotely, that's going to be given to them, and they'll have that opportunity.
Okay.
Any plan we do select, though, you know, we are going to need to enter into negotiations with our teachers' union to discuss this, because, you know, just like them, we want to make sure that anything that we implement that has to do with really remote or or in-person, that they have the supports they need, they have the guidelines in place, that we ensure those guidelines will be followed, and anything we do is done safely and responsibly. So that's that's definitely a top of mind for myself, and it's a top of mind for them as it should be. I think sometimes when we have these discussions, there's a lot of focus just on the student and family aspect, but, you know, you need to take into account what our staff members and our employees are thinking as well, and their families, because everyone's situation's different. So we'll have to enter into negotiations, you know, I think that we have a good relationship, and we'll be able to to get something done that people are comfortable with, and we can, we can go from there.
So, you know, when will a decision be made, and how will that be communicated to the school community?
So it looks like that will be made at our next meeting, which is next Wednesday, August 5th. In the meantime, you know, people are more than welcome to to reach out to us to express their opinion. But after we select a plan, essentially, there's there is continued work that will need to be done, not only in the weekend between the meeting, but after the meeting, regarding answering those questions that people have. I think it shouldn't be out of out of line to host a public forum with these different groups to communicate the plan where people can feel comfortable asking the questions that need to be asked and that they can get answers to. So that's really what we're looking at. I know after we select a plan, we'll have to effectively communicate that plan, but it would give us a little over a month to really get the message through about what the plan is, get a commitment from families and teachers about if they'd like to do in-person or remote, depending on their situation. And I do also need to mention the state, I think just two days ago, did say districts will be allowed to delay the opening of school by up to 10 days, but no later than September 16th. Any later than September 16th, we would need a waiver to extend past them. And they've also removed the 180-day requirement. They're making it 170 days. So it's up to each individual district, though, whether they take advantage of that. And any time that we do extend should be used to provide professional development for our staff, whether it be on health and safety guidelines and best practices, or simply remote learning technology and how to best use that tech in your classroom, or your virtual classroom.
Sure. So is that what's going to happen in Quincy, September 16th?
So I'm not entirely certain. I think that's something that we will need to discuss with with the union about what they're comfortable with, whether that's simply a reopening date or, you know, necessary PD for them. Because at the same time, you know, I think starting too early without a good base of professional development, regardless of the plan that you choose, would be a disaster. So I am personally leaning to maybe give a few extra days. I don't see how that can be a bad thing. I understand people are itching a little bit to get back to normalcy, but I want to make sure that we're following those health and safety guidelines, and I want to make sure any remote learning that we have is following best practices as well. So there's certainly a lot to think about and and consider, and we're going to continue to look at these plans over the next week or so, and we'll make the decision that we feel is best for, you know, the city of Quincy and Quincy Public Schools. And I know not everyone will will be happy with the decision we make, I think, just given the the survey results, and I understand that, but we have to do what's best for the majority of the district.
Of course, it's all fluid too, right, based on the the health situation at the time?
Right, it absolutely is. And I think one other thing for me to be mindful of is setting out parameters for at what point do we as a district say, okay, we can move up a step, or we should move down a step? You know, at what point within our community do we say, okay, we just, we need to play our part and, you know, either reopen or shrink and close down a little bit more for remote learning? So we have to be mindful of that, and I think setting parameters so everyone is clear heading into the fall what those guidelines are, because we don't want people to say, well, these are just arbitrary, there's no reason to say now, all of a sudden, you're going to go full in-person, or you're going to go full remote, or maybe you go from full remote to a hybrid. I think it'd be good for people just to be aware of that so that they can follow along with where we're at in general.
Sure. And of course, I mean, the new superintendent will have to be, you know, kind of briefed on on this, these plans as well, because he has not been, yeah, they're all men, so he has not been involved in this process.
Right. I do think at the very least, an advantage that any candidate has going into this, you know, they're all working in public schools, and they're all playing a role in their respective reopenings. So at the very least, you know, they're having all these same conversations that have been had by the folks here in Quincy. So every district's going through this, and the challenges effectively are the same. You know, which plan is best for you, your community? Why is it? Why was, you know, whatever decision that will be made, made? And, you know, some people will be happy with it, some won't, some will be somewhere in between. And that's just, that's just how it is, and, you know, it's it's not unique to Quincy, though.
Well, it's true. It's pretty much how legislations pass, too.
Yes.
Can we talk a little bit, Anthony, about the graduation ceremonies that did happen?
Yeah, so the graduations did happen. They did happen in person, and I'd say, for the most part, you know, our students and families followed the guidelines. And I'd say for the most part, you know, our, our students and families followed the guidelines that we had laid out, uh, you know, being spaced out six feet. Wearing your mask, um, you know, not actually tossing your caps all the way in the air. They're just simply raising them at the end. Dead. Um, so I, I think it was, it was really nice that we were able to do that for them. You know, I think the speeches were fantastic from our student leaders. Um, it was really nice to hear about their experiences. And how they've sort of navigated the last few months, how they feel about their classmates. Um, uh, the, the graduating class of twenty twenty is a very special group. Um, and they always will be. I think they will remember their high school graduation a little bit more than I certainly do uh at this moment. Um, so I, I'm really happy for them. Uh, but you know, at the same time, we did have a, a situation with. Uh, one of the graduations, the ten AM uh Quincy High School graduation. Where uh a parent had uh needed medical attention just before the beginning of, of the ceremony. Um, and it, it ended up turning out that they had tested positive for COVID nineteen. Um, and then come to find out in the days after that they had symptoms up to forty-eight hours prior to the ceremony. Um, and even though they had symptoms, they decided that they were not going to follow, you know, our recommendation and guidelines. That we set forth and attend anyway. Um, you know, we're wishing that person speedy recovery. I mean, the, it's, it's not a great situation, you know, and we never wish ill upon anyone in our community or any other community, especially with, with COVID. Um, but at the same time, you know, this is specifically why we have these procedures in place. It's why we put the guidelines in place. I know some people didn't like that we required masks. Didn't like that we require a six-foot distance, didn't like that we ensured that every student would only be allowed two guests from within their immediate family. And I understand it's, it's difficult. I mean, it's a momentous occasion, and you want all of your family to be there. Um, to celebrate and to have them rush the field after and take photos. Um, you know, that, those can be special moments. But unfortunately, there are always a few that, that might ruin it for the rest of us. Um, and that's true with, with absolutely anything in life. Um, so we take the precautions that we can. And um, you know, Ruth Jones, the, our commissioner, has been all over, um, you know, that, that case. And all the other cases that have spread it up throughout Quincy and shutting down, providing people testing and making sure that, you know. Uh, those that have positive cases are quarantining, those that have a potential positive, or even came into contact with a positive case. Uh, are following those guidelines. She's doing an absolute fantastic job. I can't say uh really any, any more good, good words about her. She, she's gone above and beyond. And um, we're very thankful to have her working with QPS as well. As we discuss how uh we'll handle positive cases and exposure, et cetera. So an absolute rock star. We can't thank her enough for, for her assistance throughout this process as well.
Anything else we should touch on? I think uh.
I think, I think that is uh, is pretty much what we had in our grouping. Um, I think the very last bit, we did uh add in some items to the EDI uh subcommittee. That was most recently established. Um, so we had that, um, over the last couple of days. But that, that was pretty much it. Um, those items, you can visit, you know, quincypublicschools.com in order to, to reread the full list. There, there were, I would say, eleven or twelve that we had, had dropped in. A lot of them stemmed from uh the various letters and petitions that, that we had received, subsequent conversations that I've had with the organizers of those. Petitions about what they'd like to see. So we're looking forward to the, to those conversations. And actually getting that started in, in the weeks ahead, most likely after uh our superintendent search has wrapped up. And um you've selected a, a reopening plan. Those are, uh, tho- those are our main focus at the time, uh, right now. But we'll move on to those items uh as, as quickly as, as we can.
Just for folks who don't know, Anthony, EDI?
Yeah, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Subcommittee, which uh I had proposed at our last meeting and had confirmed by, uh, by my colleague. Looking forward to, to starting with that work. Uh, and, you know, all the other work that, uh, that we have in front of us. But, you know, they're, they're important topics. And as always, if folks at home have comments, questions, or concerns, you know, they can reach me. At Anthony Andronico at quinsypublicschools.com. Or if you visit quinsypublicschools.com, you can find all the information that, uh, that you're looking for from us.
Okay, appreciate your time. We'll, uh, we'll touch base next week and uh find out about the reopening plan.
Thanks again. Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. Take care.